Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation, and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin and the Nishnabe, Que, oh, sorry, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda. May I have a mover? Councillor Ranger, secondaire. Councillor Dykens. Madam Clerk.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Donald Dykens. It resolves that the agenda for the regular meeting of council on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Item number three, declaration of temporary interest. None noted. Item number four, petitions and delegations. There are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. May I have a mover? Councillor Owens. And Councillor Kylie as secondaire. Madam Clerk.
Moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolves that council approved the minutes of the ball and mute, minutes of the regular meeting of council held August 13th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communication. May I have a mover for 6.1? Councillor Ranger, secondaire. Councillor Owen. Madam Clerk.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. It resolves that report number 2024, CAO BR8, entitled Virbal Update 2024 AML Conference. We receive your information.
Thank you. Alan Smith, CAO. He may proceed.
Uh, if you may, members of council. So I attended the AML conference with Mayor Whitehead and Councillor Owen, uh, from August 18th to 21st. This was the 125th anniversary of AML, which had over 3,000 people in attendance. This is probably the largest one they've had. Uh, there was a variety of seminars one could attend, ranging from asset management, planning, account development, and environmental issues, for example. However, the main intent of AML is to network and delegate to the various provincial ministries. The Kirkland Lake met with ministries of infrastructure, uh, mines, and also the social general. Now, Mayor Whitehead, Councillor Owen will probably be providing their updates, so I won't go into great detail. But the meetings we had were productive. We also took the opportunity to stress to the Ministry of Infrastructure and to the Ministry of Mines the importance of our application to the Housing and Ailing Water Systems Fund. As council is aware, the town's application was not successful, but we are reapplying for the second intake, which is due November. And we want to stress again to the province the importance of having the town's infrastructure upgraded so we can meet the demands of current residents and future growth. And, uh, I'll answer any questions, but again, Mayor and Councillor Owen, giving the updates.
Anybody with members of council? None noted? Do we require the motion to be read again? Okay, all in favor to accept? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Thank you. May I have a mover for item 6.2? Councillor Shava. And secondaire? Councillor Kylie, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Moved by Councillor Lachaba, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolves that report number 2024 ATM 16, entitled supplemental fireworks by law housekeeping set fine schedule and user fees being received, and that the proposed housekeeping amendments be made to the town's fireworks bylaws presented. That subsection 22I of the town's notice bylaw be lifted to allow for an updated fireworks bylaw to be given through readings on September 3rd, 2024. And then Schedule A of the town's fire services fees and charges by law 24029 be amended to reflect the addition of fees associated with the establishment of a permitting process and fee for the display of fireworks as presented. And file that subsection 22I of the town, the town's notice bylaw be lifted to allow for an amending fire services fees and charges by law to be given through readings on September 3rd, 2024.
Thank you. This report will be delivered by Jennifer Montfong, Minister of Labor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to you and members of council. Um, in an effort to capture the totality of councils and amendments to the fireworks bylaw at its August 13th meeting, uh, the Fire Chief and I noted certain recitals that required amendments, as well as the establishment of their, um, per, sorry, permit process for the display of fireworks. We also noted that the enforceability of the bylaw was lacking in terms of the display of fireworks, as well as the public safety for the permitting process for the display of fireworks. Um, and, uh, we set fine schedule required amendments as well in order to capture the permitting process for the display of fireworks. So at this time, uh, administration have made redline edits to the bylaws as they were passed last week to encapsulate those changes of enforceability of the bylaw, uh, and, uh, to ensure that, uh, there's permitting process established for the display of fireworks, fireworks.
Okay. Any questions from council? Councillor Dykens?
A few, Madam Mayor, to, uh, the clerk, ju- just for clarity, um, quite often in the report it says, um, um, it's up to the Fire Chief to make certain decisions, um. What happens in the absence of Fire Chief? Not that, I hope anything happens, but if he's all sick or away, is there provision for someone else to meet this meeting?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, you all invite the Fire Chief to come and answer the question.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, there is provision, uh, currently, um, that the PCs in charge of the shifting are, um, to use my authority and my accents. Right in those matters.
Perfect. And we, Councillor Shava?
Yeah, thank you to, uh, and Chair to my Fire Chief. I just want to follow up on, on that question. I've been thinking about that. Um, it's a lot of responsibility. I get it. So would there be instances where you say no? And if you say no, so what would you request for the applicant that would just be it? And what do, what might those instances be where you may say no? Don't mind speculating if you can. But my main question would be, if you say no, what would you request for the applicant?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councillor Shava. As long as you follow provisions that you own a piece of property and you have legal right to the property, there shouldn't be an issue. Uh, the fact that we would say no is if it was a town-owned piece of property and you wanted to host an event on that piece of property, they could come to council and request a delegation to council for approval. But without council's approval to use the piece of property, I would have to deny the permit.
Follow that.
Yes, follow. Madam Chair, what happens if you live in an apartment building? You don't only, you're not a legal owner of, of, of where you live, so. I mean, you said, well, if you're legal owner is one of the criteria that made you look at, but what happens if you're not a legal owner, just a tenant?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councillor Shava. It's just the, um, you have the legal right to use this property. So if you're a renter, you could get a letter from the owner of said property. And with the letter and your permit, say, I do have legal right to, to apply for the permit and discharge the fireworks on this property. There isn't a problem. It's just make sure the check and balance is in place.
Okay. Thank you further for members of council. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, oh, yes, so, Madam Mayor. When I voted on this, I voted on it as a community safety bylaw. I'm not big on charging fees for this. I, I think that at least where I voted from was to keep the community safe, not to, to increase, uh, revenue for the town. It's, uh, I don't think we'll be calling people in on overtime to, uh, issue the permits. I mean, we're already paying them to be there. I don't think it's good public relations for the fire department to be, you know, we just went through the, the fee situation with the, uh, outside burning. I don't think it's good public relations for the fire department of the town to start adding more fees again. Um, so I'm not in favor of this because of the fees.
Councillor Owens?
I agree with certain aspects of what Mr., uh, Councillor Owen is saying about the fees, uh, and this was discussed last council meeting. There's no mention of fees. It was, again, community safety. I, I've got a different type of issue with the report itself and the discussion aspect. I think that the language used is overly direct. Uh, I feel like that we've wasted staff time, especially in that first paragraph and, uh, efforts had to be redirected, rewrite some other stuff to rewrite this, and then it gets to the red tape portion of it, so we're lifting procedure once again to move this forward. I, I don't think it's right. If, there, there, if we need to put fees to it, then I think that should be part of the user fee discussion in 2025. I think the bylaw as we passed it was in my mind clear. We voted on. We made a few changes and came to language. We, uh, permit for everybody and that was that. Red tape, red tape. There's different aspects of this, of dealing with the town of Kirkland Lake that involves a lot of red tape. That's part of the political process. I, I guess it's, I don't, we should be lifting them, uh, the bylaw for, or the procedural bylaw for this. Two meetings in a row.
Madam Clerk, for your line, Councillor.
Sure, good question. Through you, um, Madam Mayor, to all the council members, uh, Councillor Owens, it's, we're not lifting the procedural bylaw. Uh, the recommendation is that we lift the notice bylaw to allow for the bylaw to be presented at the same meeting rather than at the next meeting. Um, and the red, the reference to the red tape in the report is simply to allow for the business of council to take place now rather than at the following meeting for the reading of the three of the, the notice provision of the 14 days notice for the passage of a bylaw to rewrite at this meeting rather than at the following meeting because that believed the intent of council was to have all of this information captured in previous, um, iteration of amendments of the bylaw, see if it accept the permitting fee, uh, which was a discussion that, uh, the Fire Chief and I had put on the table for council's consideration.
Okay. Oh, well, Councillor Owens?
Okay, I, I misspoke. We're still lifting procedure, uh, said procedure for notice aids. The end result is the same. Something is being modified in order to, to fast track a bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Ranger?
Just wanted to note that I do support there being a fee attached to requesting this permit. It's a luxury, not a necessity, to, uh, utilize fireworks. And if somebody can afford the cost of fireworks, they can afford the permit to have the fireworks.
Thank you. Councillor Shava?
Uh, thank you, uh, through you, uh, Madam Chair, while I have the chief here. Uh, I mean, I, I have no problem with the fees. But, um, what, what are people getting for that, for the fees? What are they getting? Uh, I don't know. You, you want this to them or you, what, what did, what did they get for that fee? It's $15. So what did they get?
So through you, Madam Mayor, to Councillor Shava. Uh, with the fees, we would review the site plan that they're gonna propose the activation of the fireworks on. Um, it may require a site visit. There may be also a follow-up with, um, bylaw permit. To ensure there's no issues with the bylaw department of the town. So there is back paperwork that needs to be followed up on?
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship. Right now, we passed by law imposing that people do things that they didn't have to do to do something they'd done for ever in this town. Putting a fee on it is just another discouraging reason to get a permit. It's just another excuse people use not to get permits. And like I say, when I voted on this, I voted on strictly as a community safety measure. There was no talk of fees. If there'd been talk of fees at the last meeting, I probably would not have voted for it. So to bring it back now and throw in fees, I think is, uh, changing all, um, the idea behind it and taking away from community service to revenue producing.
I mean, hearing that any member of staff would want to make an amendment to this bylaw, it's not, uh, not staff, sorry, council? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So you'll have to state your amendment, Councillor Owens?
Well, I need to go back here. Where's? I would move that the section pertaining to charging your fees, fireworks, ignition be removed from my law.
Can I have a secondaire? Councillor Dykens, secondaires?
And may I request a recorded vote, please?
Okay, so in a second, yeah, I'm seeing, I'm just looking through you. And then the motion removes the, and the last two letters. Allows to recitals of the recommendation, which is directly related to the town's fire services fees and charges by law. But, um, if I can request a brief recess so that I can review exactly what that means, so we don't give them the revision.
Yep, we're gonna take a brief recess for five minutes for review of language. Thank you. We're rising for recess. The review of language in the bylaw has been done.
We are, we are muted.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Um, if I understand correctly, Councillor Owen, Owen, you are looking to remove in, in its entirety, uh, the discussions surrounding the fees associated with the permit for the display of fireworks, which would, which, which I understand your amendment would be to remove, um, in the recommendation, the section that reads, "And that Schedule A of the town's fire services fees and charges by law 24029 be amended to reflect the addition of fees associated with the establishment of a permitting process and fee for the display of fireworks as presented." And then finally, subsection 22I of the town's notice bylaw be lifted to allow for amending fire services fees and charges by law to be given through readings on September 3rd, 2024. That is your amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Will speak to anyone?
Only me.
Okay, okay. So, Councillor Owen, because you presented the amendment, you have first crack at it. Do you have anything to say?
Um, no, because I've already said what I had to say.
Perfect. Councillor Dykens, because you seconded it, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just briefly, I'm at the nerve, uh, to you, um, I think it's another principle because we did vote a certain length time and then was added to it, so. Um, and also I, I believe that the fire services can capture this in their daily activities that you don't necessarily have to charge.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it to the floor for just on the amendment regarding fees. Any other comments? None noted. Councillor Owen did request a recorded vote. So, Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Recorded vote, excuse me, a recorded vote has been requested by, um, Councillor Rick Owen, um, Councillor Janice Ranger.
May?
Um, point of order, um, 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 Madam Mayor. I think in our procedural bylaws, um, it's required that we go alphabetically. I know we've been doing it this way for a while, but I believe our bylaws say we must go alphabetically.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
I can propose a motion to change the bylaw.
No, we're good. We're fine. Okay.
Councillor, Y'all are good against?
Yay.
Councillor, Patrick Kylie?
Yay.
Councillor Rick Owen?
Yay.
Councillor Casey Owens?
Yes.
Councillor Janice Ranger?
Nay.
Councillor Lachaba?
Yeah.
And Mayor Stacy Wade?
Yay. The yays have it. The amendment has been passed. That was enough. That's probably, uh, technical failure. Okay, so now we will return to the original motion. Is there any further comments or questions from council? None noted? Do we need to read the, the motion again now that it has been, um, amended? Uh, Madam Mayor?
Before we read the motion, Madam Mayor, um, I just want to note that, uh, that if it is the little council to go, uh, in this direction, uh, that there is a bylaw that will require it to be removed from, uh, the agenda, which is bylaw number 2472. On the agenda, I will go through. But I can.
Section 2? 83, yes, 83, yeah, bylaw 072.
And it's longer reading motion as, um, I mean, moved by Councillor Lachaba, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolves that report number 2024 ATM 16, entitled supplemental fireworks bylaw housekeeping set fine schedule and user fees being received, and that the proposed housekeeping amendments be made to the town's fireworks bylaws presented. And then subsection 22, one of the town's notice bylaw be lifted to allow for the updated fireworks bylaw to be given through readings on September 3rd, 2024.
Sorry, sorry. So that last part, does that last part not need to be removed because we're not reading that bylaw?
I'm not reading that at all. I did not read that.
Did you not just read the subject for third?
Yes. This is for the fireworks bylaw. This is not for the user fees and barcodes. For the fireworks bylaws getting it.
Okay, sorry. Give me a second to wrap my noodle around it because clearly updated fireworks. Okay, sorry. I do apologize. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Thank you very much. May I have chief? Item 6.3, connecting link 2024-2025 design project, uh, mover? Casey Owens. Secondaire, Rick Owen. Madam Clerk?
Should may be moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. It will be resolved at report number 2024 GW8, entitled connecting 2024-2025 design project management slash administration award be received. And that council hereby awarded contract to EXP Services Inc. for the provision of engineering and project management administration as outlined in the spoken work identified within 61124 RFP and as presented in the amount of $107,690 plus interest. And by that execution by law be brought forward for three readings on September 17th, 2024.
All in best, no, sorry, the report will be by Director of Public Works, St. Edward. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. For you to counsel, I'm here today to discuss the successful proponent for the design and contract administration for the connecting link 2024-2025, which is to reconstruct part of Highway 66 from the east side of the Gulfport intersection to the entrance of Heritage North. A request for proposal was issued in July, 2024, and the town received four proposals and bids. All proposals were considered through an evaluation matrix to determine which proponent would offer the town the best service for this specific project. EXP Services was a successful company at a price of $170,690 plus HST. As we know, the lowest visit, the lowest bidder is not always a successful proponent, as price is only one component of the evaluation matrix. When, and then normally low price is received in comparison to the other prices, it creates an unfair advantage to the low bidder on the pricing component of this evaluation matrix. The low bidder ends up with four points on the price component, and the other companies are rated very low because of the large price cap. So while scoring for this project is close, there is in fact a major difference in the completeness of the proposal and price certainty. EXP, in this case, was not the lowest bidder, but offered the most complete proposal for the work and the best price certainty. The lowest bidder came in just shy of $107,000, but did not include an all-inclusive package and indicated needing additional funds to complete the work. This explains their low bid and is an indication of price uncertainty, which is a big loss financially. Our recommendation is to award this contract to EXP Services based on the completeness of their proposal and their price certainty. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councillor Owens?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'm glad we're already at this step for the connecting link next year. This is awesome. Uh, I'm glad we were able to get this matrix explanation as to why it was given this way, uh. When I read this, the same thing, like, if, if there's a huge difference in price, I thought it is a red flag in my book that something doesn't seem right, but this clearly indicates that EXP is the, the right choice for this, uh, this contract, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Shava?
Thank you very much to you, uh, uh, Madam Chair, to the director, yeah, I too, uh, very happy that this is, uh, is going out because we've been trying to make sure everything goes out to that we can hopefully have, uh, a very valuable construction season next year, so people will actually see actual, see things being done now, always, you know, uh. But, uh, my question, excuse me, my question is that, uh, in, in the past, we used to get all the amounts, we used to get them when I first started here. So you see, uh, what everybody, what, what the bidders, what the bid, uh, is conspicuously absent here. We only know one price, $170,000, and then you indicated there has been something. If, um, am I missing something? Because I don't think there, the, all the bidders, the prices are here, the matrix is here, but the prices are not here. Uh, it's something that I would like to see going forward if it's possible, because that's something that we can explain to, uh, 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 ratepayers, something that they will understand. They will understand matrix, but it will understand it's, it's $10 or $15 or whatever the price might be. Uh, number two, I, I, I'm not too sure. Uh, I, I do get it that the lowest bidder might not be very successful, but it that benefit must be something that's really, really egregious, something really terrible about this lowest bidder. Maybe they worked for us in the past and we're not happy with them. Uh, for me, uh, to save money, I always think, you know, with some of these people that you see here, they're, they're highly qualified engineering companies. To the best of my knowledge, and to the best of my knowledge, the preponderance of all the contracts in this town are awarded to ESP since I've been here. Uh, I don't know if, uh, there are any other companies, so, uh, I, I, I think we should seriously look at the lowest bidder. Uh, uh, in my case, I'm always gonna be looking for a lowest bidder because that's how I'm gonna save money. And I trust any of this guy who actually carry out that job. Uh, very successfully, in my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just gonna allow, um, CAO Smith to answer a portion of, of your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, since I've been here, we have three Madam Mayor to, to council. Um, in the past, uh, the most recent, um, will be awarded the, the connecting link engineering and project management to Concept Dash. Uh, it was last year, and we use the same process involved, the same, um, matrix, uh, same point allocation, uh, system. Uh, that was four points above, um, the, uh, run route. So we, we have, we have used that same system. We haven't put the prices, and this someone can definitely look at. So we we have we have used that same system. We haven't put the prices, and this someone can definitely look at. Also, when we look at the work that has been distributed recently uh, to the various companies, you'll know that Jill Richards is our client this open. They're also doing our feasibility study for our firewall. And we like I mentioned, concept matches currently doing the engineering and design work uh, for our connecting list. Um, overall, uh, EXP Services was more wholesome and uh, robust um, uh, application of proposal. And when it came to price certainty, uh, EXP did deliver. Uh, the runner-up did not. And in the long run, we might be paying more than the allocated money for this project, so uh, overall, um, the way the allocation came out, EXP Services was was the uh, the uh, preferred uh, for this project.
Thank you. Sorry, um, Director, do you have anything to add to answer anything further from Counselor Shaba?
I think your C A O is very much.
Counselor Kylie?
Good afternoon, Your Worship. Um, I like the idea of this metrics. Uh, we seldom see it. Um, I would suggest on anything over fifty thousand that we continue on this process to have the matrix uh, supplied to counsel. It gives us, as Counselor. Casey said, uh, it gives us a good overview of what uh, the others were thinking or admitting, so it's a good process in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dykens?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, I'm not sure who to talk to. There's two questions and they're related. Um, so the design portion, the towns, um, ten percent of the sixty-one, nine fifty. It said, uh, it's coming out of operating the budget of twenty twenty-four. My question is, is it already included, or if we vote for it, we're changing the budget? That's the first. And the second one is similar, the project management administrator part. It said it's coming out of twenty twenty-five working capital reserves. Obviously, we haven't passed the budget for twenty twenty-five, so if we do uh, vote yes for this, it's a, then it will be part already of the twenty twenty-five budget. So that's just.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay. Madam Mayor. Um, the design phase is very low cost, uh, since we're only covering ten percent and ninety percent is funded. And I, within the public works department's operating budget, we already have allocated money for these types of expenditures with consultants. So it's something that fits within the existing budget. And for the two thousand twenty-five capital reserve budget, uh, basically, from my understanding is that this was already presented to counsel through another report to counsel. And that's where the decision was made to allocate the funds to hold in the budget, since we have a contribution agreement with the Ministry of Transportation.
We'll follow up.
Yep, so we already voted on for twenty twenty-five. Sorry?
Give me.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry, is this a Lloyd or yeah? Okay, Counselor Ranger?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor, too. So Steph, thank you so much for clarifying about the lowest bid being at a hundred and seven, but that they would need more funds to complete the project. Um, it, I made notes of that because we're not seeing what the presented or what the presented amount of what they proposed. Um, I appreciate you clarifying, um, because we will get questions as to why we didn't take the lowest bid without knowing those details. And I'm not in this field to know what other parts would come. I expect that when you present, you're presenting the most rounded offer, knowing that um, we don't want to see surprises later in a bill. That's not part of what we approved in the first place, so thank you so much for that work.
Counselor Owen?
Uh, through you, Worship. Um, I'm the least qualified person in the world to know which engineering firm to choose. So I'm glad we have our staff to to make recommendations to us. Um, as politicians, we rely heavily on our experts that we hire. Um, I too, like that, would like to, like Counselor Shaba, would like to see the price of each bid. Um, it's just a thing with me. If it doesn't happen, it, it's just a piece of information I have in my coffee. Through this, we can see, you know, why we didn't go with the lowest bid, but it's still nice to know, you know, what the different bids were. And just by coincidence, when I was at AMO, I was talking uh, to the Vice President of EXP. So what I know about that company is that they have a vast amount of experience in Northern Ontario. Um, they also have a sort of a main sub-office in uh, Sunberg, and I think that's mostly geotechnical work that they do out of there. But you know, as I said, I had no idea when I ran into this person that we would be discussing that company tonight, but I did. I would tell him, yes, I've seen your trucks in town. I know you do work, whether it's for us or for mine, but they seem to be a very competent uh, experienced company.
Counselor Ranger? I just want to, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, uh, I agree that with Vlad and Rick want to see the amounts they proposed, so that if you forget or somebody's presenting on your behalf, and they don't give us the information as to why we didn't choose the lowest bid, we would be able to have the opportunity to ask, and then you could fill us in as to what those, you did it this time, but uh, it would allow us ahead of time to know to maybe prompt those questions if that information wasn't meet us. So, thanks.
Anything further from members of council? Now over there, are we all comfortable on voting? So excellent, all in favor? Opposed? Item carried? Thank you, sir. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motion. Uh, this one is moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded. Is there a secondary? Oh, sorry, right. Thank you. Oh, sorry, it's right in there. Go ahead, Casey Owens. Oh, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, be resolved at council director that administration bring forward. A report to investigate amending the language in a current parking bylaw fifteen oh seventeen has amended to consider time limitations for on-street parking for Kirkland Street between Duncan Street and Bospect Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping me on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so so it's no secret that parking could be somewhat challenging in a downtown court, Kirkland, which I guess is an awesome issue to have, but um, this area specific um, between Kirkland and Duncan uh, is a bit different than the debt-like government rule in my book, because there's large employers, kind of like, you know, not to single anybody out, or our next door neighbor as well, is a rather large employer. And it's very common, and I walked in the morning all summer, and both parking lots that are designated for both buildings are half empty and on-street parking is already full. And if we look at our uh, strategic priority, service excellence, if our customers or the businesses next door have customers go there and can access on-street parking close to the service that is being required, then to me, if you look at the question, is this uh, no, sorry, access point of contact where residents identify ways to streamline communications, increase uh, stakeholder engagement, demonstrate user friendliness, and provide optimal service, and we're we're missing number one in the first strategic bullet. So uh, I think one way of uh, being able to curb that is to limit this specific area, these nine spots, the two-hour limit, so customers have access to the different businesses, whether the town of Kirkland Lake, CMHA, or anybody else, on Kirkland Street in uh, diamond fashion, and don't have to go around the block three, four times before they.
Thank you. Counselor Owen, your second to speak is seconded.
Through you, Worship. Um, I think Casey put it very well. Um, historically, uh, what happened was parking officer with a chalk mark on the tire, and then a judge decided that would end on the road, so they could verify that that people had not moved. And then the judge decided that that was vandalism, so that had stopped. But it is still enforceable simply by putting a chalk mark at the front of the tire and at the back of the same tire, and marking down the time that he did it, and coming back two hours later. And uh, if you did a front and back tire, it's pretty obvious that car had not uh, not moved. And uh, so it is enforceable. I know I've had the joy of uh, many times driving around the block several times looking for parking spots, and I recognize some of the vehicles that are parked out front, and they are employees of of some places here in the immediate area. So I I think, you know, we can start there and see how it goes. And so I fully support this notice motion.
Counselor Kylie?
Good afternoon, Your Worship. Um, I'm just curious if we've had any complaints from the businesses. I'd hate to go ahead and do this and have the business, business in a bit of a, we're. Casey?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Uh, actually, two hours ago, I had a conversation with a business two doors down about his customers being able, or hadn't, not being able to park. And one solution was offered to them, but it it doesn't solve the problem using somebody's private parking to get there. It's still two blocks away. They should be able to access spaces uh, in the immediate vicinity. So, yeah, I've had complaints, conversations, because complaints I would redirect, being an operation, saying I would redirect to staff, conversations, yes, and that conversations for the business staff.
Counselor Ranger?
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, to the CEO, Alan. And before we go to directly to a bylaw, curious if an email or a conversation has happened to encourage how the Kirkland Lake staff to not take up those parking spots um, and initially start with us as employees of the town to role model parking in our assigned parking spaces, and then perhaps conversations or an email or a letter could be addressed to the other large employers on this street to encourage them to have their employees relocate and not park open street parking, to see if that initially could um, resolve the issue. I do know that it can be challenging for some local businesses in the area that are on this street, because they would have clients or customers who would be long here longer than the two-hour duration. I'm speaking specifically about Chance and Cholo across the street, um, and the parking directly outside their business. But uh, I I haven't heard of any complaints. It can be a bit of a challenge, but we are in luxury that this town doesn't have paid parking, and so when that comes to challenge of finding parking period.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Actually, uh, this topic uh, was going to be discussed at tomorrow's C N R I G team meeting. Uh, I was going to bring it to actually those points uh, that some town staff do park occasionally on on the the those nine spaces, same with our neighbors. And a conversation could be had uh, with our neighbors and also with staff to to uh, utilize the appropriate parking lots. I know that they're, they do have a private lot that is, they're hesitant on using the park close to their office. Uh, but that's something that um, uh, we could um, investigate. You know, uh, there's something that um, uh, so that we do use the appropriate uh,
Counselor Allen?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the point Counselor Ranger was making, uh, in presenting this motion and in the emails with the clerk, I I can still with certainty that the conversation has happened with staff, and as the image is that, then there is an unwritten arrangement. And that's, I think, where the problem become when these unwritten arrangements are forgotten or time lapses, that's so, I think the unwritten part needs to be that that's where the bylaw or the investigation of such bylaw, because I don't think we're passing a bylaw with this, we're just asking for a report, is to, okay, like, let's no longer make this unwritten transfer to a written policy specifically for this little area.
Anything further? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, through you, Your Worship. Um, not concerning this particular area, but historically speaking, when the parking meters came out of this town, um, it it was a real problem with businesses parking directly in front of their uh, businesses and customers having nowhere to park. The chamber took that on with little or no success through letter, what whatever methods they used. It was a friendly, non-bylaw situation. And what I uh, found quite amusing at the time was, since I knew a number of cars that business owners owned, some of the ones that were most vocal about uh, taking up spots in front of their own businesses with people that were doing it themselves. So I'm not opposed to to uh, Counselor Ranger's suggestion. I just don't have a lot of um, hope that it will result in any meaningful change, but hey, before a bylaw, I have no problem with trying to, or asking them to take everybody into consideration.
Anything further from members of council? Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
I can get that, okay. I'm for it.
Okay. Carried unanimously. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Bylaw zero-two-four dash oh-seven-oh, can I have a mover? Counselor Owens, secondary. Counselor Ranger, Madam Clerk.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger, be resolved with the following bylaw be read, numbered pass signed by the Mayor, Mayor Spooker, and a civil corporation be affixed there to, by law number twenty-four seventy, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a conditional contribution agreement, excuse me, with the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation for the Community Enhancement Program Recreation Center retrofit project.
Thank you. Just before I um, ask for our comments from other members of council, what is our next step after this has been signed? It's been ongoing since twenty twenty-two, I believe. So just a refresher, that was phase one that we in twenty twenty-two, we went for phase one, and then we went for phase two, and now it's like two years later. Just a little refresher on what the next step is after this.
Sure. Apologizing. Uh, to you, Madam Mayor. So this um, this really is phase one for uh, for the old pool renovation project. So phase one was the initial intent to apply. Phase two was the actual application in which we were approved for.
Yeah.
Uh, so once this execution agreement gets signed, we're looking to uh, do an infill of the pool, followed by a concrete pad to level out the uh, the flooring. And then it will probably come back to council and see what that space will turn into.
Yep, perfect. Thank you very much for the reminder. Any other comments or questions before we vote from council? None noted, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. Item number eight point two, bylaw twenty-four dash oh-seven-one, can I have a mover? Counselor Owen, secondary. Counselor Shaba, Madam Clerk.
Mm-hmm. Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Lajala, be resolved with the following bylaw be read, numbered, pass signed by the Mayor, Mayor Spooker, and a civil corporation be affixed there too, by law number twenty-four seventy-one, being a bylaw to regularly for sale and discharge of fireworks within the jurisdiction of the town.
Any comments or questions? None noted, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously, Madam Clerk, for eight point three.
It is removed from here.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There were none submitted prior to council. Item number ten, notices of motion. Counselor Shaba?
Uh, to you, uh, Madam Chair, I, at the last meeting, I did discuss very briefly with the CEO and uh, uh, Mr. Sean McCarty. Uh, I'm going to be proposing a letters of motion uh, with regard to the end date for solar farm partnership.
Thank you very much for that. Item number eleven, counselors reports. Counselor Owen?
Yes, through you. Yes, through you, your worship, um. August was actually busy month for me, um, the big one being uh, the MO uh conference in Ottawa. This being my second conference, I took a little different approach in attending it. The first conference, I went to every breakup session that I could, thinking that that was the most effective use of my time. I brought back ideas and um anyways, so, so at this conference, I decided I would take a slightly different approach in that I would do what I call hallway lobby. And um, it worked out quite well for me. Um, I had a, an extended uh conversation with George Perry, the Minister of Mines. And informed him about all these, and I'm not using this word like exciting things that are about to happen in Kirkland Lake. Um, and of course, uh he is a former mine executive, so we, we did discuss, you know, what's happening with Egg Needle Eagle and and he's very impressed with the, with the company and and uh, so I'm, I'm hoping he heard what I said about need a little help in order to uh, to expand. Um, I'll go into that later. I also uh, I met with Michelle Elu, is that properly?
Well, no.
Well, no, whatever, I'm not French, I apologize. Um, the Mayor Timmins, and you might say, well, why, why did you talk to her? Well, for two reasons. One, there may be a regional thing that Timmins and Kirkland Lake want to go together on. Uh, your worship, uh already has a working relationship, a very good relationship with Mayor Timmins. And I felt that further reinforcing that down the road, it could pay off, but it certainly wasn't a waste of time. Uh, she was also on, uh, one of the uh breakout sessions I went to was about the opioid crisis and she was on the panel during that as well. And as I'm sure you're aware, they, they've just lost or are losing their safe injection site. Ironically, the day the uh, I went to that seminar or breakout was the same day that the government announced they were closing down um a number of the uh safe sites, so it's, it's very sad. I also met with two councillors and a deputy mayor from a small community in Southern Ontario and uh I happened to know the camp, one of the councillors before meeting with me was they ate, I had already eaten, so I sat there and watched them eat. They're good eaters, Southern Ontario, they're very good eaters, but um in discussing some of the frustrations and and positive things uh about being on council, I found it's very similar, but that they had very similar experiences. Um, so that was more just a personal enlightenment that what we're dealing with here is not all as unusual for other communities. In terms of the uh delegations, um, we had two, well, we had more than two delegations, but two different ministries. Madam Mayor and uh CIO Smith were the factual people and I was the passionate one. And uh, I think the balance worked out well. Um, definitely with the Minister of Mines, there could be no denying, I was very passionate about the potential we have uh for this town and major development and major growth. And that with a little bit of help, we can get there. So we were very well received. So time will tell. You, you never know with these delegations. You think you may have made a very good impression and maybe you didn't, or they may just not have the money. They all encouraged us to go for the second round of funding on the housing uh grant. So they, they're very aware that we want it. And I think that's important, was probably one of the more important things that we got across during the delegations. And um I also went um to the International Overdose Awareness Day at Tobin Park. Um, it's no secret that um, I've had, excuse me for a minute. I've had my own struggles uh with addiction. So it's important to me to support others. Uh, and support families of people who've lost uh family members. Um, there was very good turnout. In fact, um DSA was one of the organizations that was there and I was on, I'm on the board of DSA and uh Michelle and DSA was telling me that uh the turnout in Kirkland Lake was higher than the turnout in Inglehart and Tumisqing Shores. Um, I'm not going to name all the organizations that were there, but pretty much everybody in town that deals with uh, either uh uh, people with addictions or their families or those affected by people with addictions. All those agencies were there uh with information um and uh uh, and support. Um, one of the most interesting things that I saw that day was our DSA avalances. And I understand we're first in the province to have this. Uh, all our DSA avalances are now equipped with a uh compression machine for the heart. Okay, it's really neat. I mean, they put it on the patient. They turn it on and it's doing the compressions that a, a paramedic would normally be doing. That frees up the paramedic to look after other wounds or other uh situations that that patient may be dealing with. And we now, I'm very pleased to say we have one of these ambulants. And they had that on display, which of course also ties in with overdoses because you want to get that heart restarted. Um, so now on the less emotional report from me, I, I'm sorry, sometimes it just, it overtakes me. Because I see where I could have been and I saw that in Ottawa and I'll just tie this in. It's been a long time since I've been to a big city and it was only a seven minute walk from our hotel to the conference center. And I was shocked, just totally shocked by how many people we've lost. You know, how many people there were in the street that are just hanging on. And it was a real eye opener for me. It just, it affected me in such way that I, I can't express. And yet you know, it, we don't see it in our faces in Kirkland Lake, but it's here. Okay, it's here and uh, it was a real eye opener. So hopefully, you know, the fight will continue. Um, I went to the uh rock solid wrestling match uh officially representing the town as the mayor had a family commitment that night. And not my cup of tea, but let me tell you, it was something else. I don't know what was more entertaining. The wrestling or the people in the crowd, you know? You're watching some of your neighbors and stuff and they're getting all excited and it was, was very amusing. Um, but the nice thing about this is that uh they come to town, the event is held in, in uh, in memory of Raymond Konton, who I'm sure many of us in the room knew. Uh, the proceeds uh go to uh community living Kirkland Lake and uh Raymond's uh uncle is the MC, okay? And I mean, all I did was show up with my three grandkids and my wife. And that's all I did. And he came over and he thanked me. He was so pleased and he said, you know, Raymond would have really enjoyed this and he's absolutely right. And I'll just share a couple of stories about Raymond. When my wife uh used to run my hockey tournaments. She would ask Raymond to uh come and help out. And Raymond would show up in a shirt, a tie, a sports jacket. And he was amazingly polite and he would do things like take trays of oranges to the players after the game. Or, you know, my wife, he'd be a runner for my wife or uh, you know, he was just so happy to be involved with hockey. And uh, the one time at a provincial championship here and Larry Hillman uh gave a speech at, at, at the banquet and he was also there to drop the ceremonial, ceremonial puck. And I got to uh introduce Raymond and Larry Hillman. You think I gave him a million dollars, you know, it was it was pretty amazing. And uh Raymond was a, a loyal, loyal Leafs man and I had many conversations with him about the Leafs. But even Raymond, before he passed, lost faith in the Leafs and changed the chairing for Montreal. So for a Leaf fan like myself, that was hard to take, but it was a successful event. Uh, and money was raised. I understand, I, I didn't hear the final amount. But I understand it was more than they raised last year, so. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for members of council, Counselor Shaba?
Oh, yeah, to you, I just, just a quick question for you. And uh, you had a short answer to that too. And
I think that was a job.
Um, you, you did uh, uh, talk about uh your board meeting, DSA, a little bit of that, right? Um, again, I'm not too sure uh Zach Crisp, that was something that people asked me and all that. I, I'm not too sure if it's something that was brought up by your board or it's something that totally out of your board. Uh, closure, is that something? I don't know.
Yeah, we just have, yeah, there's just some um question about jurisdiction of
Jurisdictional, alright.
Regarding that, I
It's not a jurisdictional.
Yeah, I think it's something that you can probably discuss at a different time.
Okay, that's what I said, it's nothing to do with us.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, yeah. Might be possible that after.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
Yes, um, anything further for members of council regarding council reports? Okay, uh, as per Counselor Owen and CIO Smith, I also attended EMO. We had five delegations to three ministries regarding water infrastructure was uh three. Joint delegation with Tumisqing Shores regarding community safety and wellbeing. And one regarding resource revenue sharing, which came out of a, uh, discussions I had with Mayors of Timmins, Duberville and Red Lake. And the motion this council supported as drafted by the municipality of Timmins earlier this year. Uh, Minister Kirchner received other, other delegations regarding the community safety and wellbeing plan during the conference. And let us know pretty well straight out the gate that he's heard and understands that the police funding are not enough to address all the needs that are coming out of the community safety and wellbeing plans like housing and food insecurity that can't come out of a policing budget. Um, so this was a marked difference over last time we delegated about this issue because at that time we were told, go to the police budget. Um, so this is one example as to why I believe attendance at these conferences where delegations are offered are so vital to the success of our communities and communities across the north. Because it does expose the ministers to the issues that we're facing at the municipal level and they do listen. Sometimes, uh, during the conference, we were made aware of new housing enabling infrastructure stream. And the deadline for the second intake of housing enabling water system funds, which is November first. The ministers did seem uh more available for side conversations and in the hall conversations. Um, I had the pleasure of speaking with three ministers at such kind of happenstance meetings. And I focused my discussions uh with them on the need for infrastructure funding for small municipalities in the north and of course, more specifically Kirkland Lake. As we are working hard towards building the new subdivisions in phase one and two, having the potential to add both apartments and single dwelling units in our community. I stressed small communities because oftentimes we're lumped in north and rural. Uh, Thunder Bay is north and rural. So if a small community like Kirkland Lake is lumped in with Sudbury, North Bay, Thunder Bay, there is no comparison and we are at a grave disadvantage. So that's why I kind of circled my conversation with ministers about small municipalities. And when I said that, I meant ten thousand or less. Uh, though we had little opportunity to attend the concurrent sessions due to the timing of our delegations. I was able to attend the Women's Networking Breakfast as ha- uh hosted by the Honorable Edith Dumont, Lieutenant Governor of Ontario and the Strengthening Public Health Current Session. Um, as Chair of both Tumisqing Health Unit and the Merger Working Group, this was of particular interest to me in our community. The ability to learn and speak with other municipalities that had merged before um and are currently going through it is really invaluable to learn from their experiences. Uh, another um, event that took place at EMO that's outside EMO planned sessions were um the dinner of the Now Caucus. So the Now Caucus formed through Cheryl Fort and Michelle Blalow and then um really traveled the north and it's Northern Ontario women. Um, and I just cannot stress how important it is to connect with your peers who share the same lived experience. Um, you think a mayor is a mayor is a mayor, a counselor is a counselor is a counselor. When you are female mayors or female counselors, at times your experiences and the way speak, people speak to you and about you are very, very different. So when you are able to connect with other female leaders, um there is a lot of cathartic things that happen, also goodness. Uh, so we did speak um regarding the uh overdose crisis and housing or lack thereof. Also, one of our members have begun a be kind movement. Um, out of a smaller municipality and I tell you, it has reached thousands already. Um, I am hoping to share the buttons I shared on my social media. It just simply says be kind. And in today's society, it is a great reminder. Unfortunately, I'm not wearing mine today. Um, however, I hope to actually share physical buttons at our next council meeting and uh share more about that program. So thank you for that. Um, may I have a move? I messed up because you couldn't catch me. Usually you catch me. Yes.
To you, Madam Mayor, just have a question. How both you and Counselor Owen mentioned the water enabling plan, the deadline for submission is November first. Did they give any indication when a decision might be expected?
Thank you for that. Unfortunately, there was no indication at the time. I'm unsure for the members of staff. Um, no, it does not appear that even in the application. Um, yes, because it took a very long time from the deadline of April nineteenth to the time that the announcements were made and I do acknowledge that. Um, with communications with uh the CIO, we're hoping that we'll have an answer. Um, especially before budget so that we can work in um what we need to, whether we're successful or not. So yeah. Absolutely, that's a good question. Um, so may I have a mover for listening to us, Counselor Owens? And seconded, I'm Pastor Ranger, thank you for that.
Moved by Counselor Rick, I'm sorry, Casey Owens. Seconded by Counselor Dennis Ranger, be resolved with verbal updates from members of council to be received.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Additional information, there is none this evening. And so we will take a brief ten minute recess between opening and closing. So come back from recess to move into the session. May I have a mover? Counselor Dykens and Secondary Counselor Kylie. Thank you, Madam First.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens. Seconded by Counselor after Kylie, be resolved with counsel adjourned in camera pursuant to section two thirty nine three one of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended. In camera pursuant to session two thirty nine three one under municipal act two thousand and one as amended at six oh six P M. Uh to receive an educational presentation on the town's procedural bylaw assignment.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Now moving into open session, a mover? Counselor Ranger, secondor, Counselor filing.
Moved by Counselor Dennis Ranger, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie, be resolved at council reconvening at open session at seven ten P M.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Uh there are no matters from closed session this evening. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw, mover? Counselor Dykens, secondor, Counselor Shaba.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor La Chaba, be resolved with the following bylaw be read numbered pass. Signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File on number twenty four seventy three, being allowed to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty four.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, uh adjournment, may I have a mover? Counselor Dykens and Kylie.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie.
Favor, opposed, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.